...with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Caramba here.
Councilwoman DeWitt.
Councilwoman Slacta.
Here.
Mayor Simmons.
Here.
Councilwoman O'Flynn.
Here.
Councilwoman Gibson.
Here.
Councilwoman Forbes.
Here.
Oh, good afternoon, everybody.
Good afternoon, Mayor.
And we're gonna start with public comment. Members of the public that would like to speak, please come forward. I see some... no, okay, I guess nobody's coming forward for public comments, so we'll move on to item five, discussion on residential density and commercial intensity in the Old 41 redevelopment overlay district.
Good afternoon, Mayor. How are you? Condolences, Alabama did offer their backup quarterback for the second half. They just didn't take it up on them, so I apologize.
Right, right, that's okay. It was a heavyweight fight, that was an amazing Super Bowl. Thank you.
Yes, sir. So, back on point, as you remember, the last time we talked about Old 41, there was the idea that we will come back and have a discussion about density and intensity prior to an application coming through, which is scheduled to be heard by you at your next city council meeting for some text changes to Old 41. This has been kind of a continuing discussion process, going back to the White Paper and how city council wants to handle entitlements and approval processes downtown. And this is the latest step and probably one of the most important steps of that process. So, to get going, everybody asks, what is density? Well, it's basically how many parts per unit. And in planning terms, you look at it as the number of units per acre. Different parts of the development community will use different things, some people use net density, some people use other measurements other than acres. But for our purposes, when you see your community development staff talk density with you, it is the number of residential units per acre that we use for that reference. This is how it's defined in your land development code. Gross residential density means the ratio of housing units per gross residential acre. There's also been a discussion on how to visualize density. Now, this graphic is probably the best one I've seen, but it is far from perfect. But it gives you at least a decent idea. On the left side, it shows single-family houses, and it obviously doesn't show lot dimensions, but a single-family is anywhere from four units an acre to 10 units an acre. Town homes, plus or minus 20 to 40 units an acre. And apartments, as you can see, three stories and up, go 50 to 100 units per acre. So at least this gives you a little bit of a visual reference as to what you're discussing when you start getting into different numbers and levels of intensity. Comparing ourselves to adjacent municipalities, the city of Fort Myers does things a lot differently than we do. They've been at it a little bit longer, and they have been established a little bit longer. And as a result, what they have done is almost worked backwards to a number. And if you'll follow some of those units over to the side, what they've done is about a year ago, maybe a little bit less, they started calculating density for multifamily units at either half a unit or three-quarters of a unit per acre because they went back and realized how much capacity they had for water, for sewer, for roads, schools, all the things that they measure for level of service. And after they did that, they figured out how many units did they have left to build, and based upon some sort of trigonometry, they were able to come up with a recommendation to calculate 750 square foot or less studio or one-bedrooms at half a unit, and for two-bedroom units that are 1,200 square feet or less, three-quarters of a unit. They don't change any of the other calculations, so fees, entitlements, everything else they look at applies one unit per unit. However, for calculating density purposes, they have reduced the impact of those types of units. They've also been looking to bring a hotel downtown.
So, one unit is 1,500? Two times 750?
Correct, yes, yes. So, in an effort to bring a hotel downtown, they have identified a site and given it a floor-area ratio, which we will get to in a second, but the floor-area ratio they gave to was 12. And to keep that in perspective, the floor-area ratio that we have for Old 41 is 1.2. So they were looking to have about a 12-story, plus or minus, hotel come down and essentially build property line to property line to accommodate their needs. The city of Naples also does things significantly differently than we do. They have several overlay districts, they have several zoning districts, and they have a plan created by Andre Swante. I forget exactly what year he did it, he just came back recently to update the plan. And what they've done is in their downtown district, which includes much more than Fifth Avenue and Third Street, they've established 1,416 units to be built. And within that designation, generally you have eight units per acre. But through some additional approvals and some pixie dust, they get you essentially up to 30 units per acre. How they do it is not really important, simply because I think our discussions is to make our process simpler. Following their process is just gonna make things a little more difficult, but knowing that they allow up to and have projects that have been approved at 30 units an acre. And if you look at the bottom bullet point, it's probably the most important one up there, and that's gonna be a topic that probably comes out of this discussion, and not so much for a discussion today, is a parking fund. And what they do is they allow a certain number of spaces to be provided on-site. All other spaces, you pay into a fund, and currently that fee is $31,998 per space. If you remember, we had a brief discussion on parking structures and the cost of those structures. And the cost of a structured space is plus or minus $24,000. Could be a little bit less, could be a little bit more, depending on the design and the size. However, that's kind of what you're looking at. So what they've done is made sure that for those spaces that they need to put into a structure, they are collecting enough money to pay for those spaces, a little more than one-for-one.
John, their height is 42, but it's three stories.
Correct, it is 42 feet and three stories. Now, there are certain... that's for the Fifth Avenue area, and that's where Swante focuses planning, so that's really what we're looking at.
So is that a matter of high ceilings, or is it a matter of they're counting the roof area? Those are high, larger?
They are. It is intended to accommodate additional architectural features and design.
Okay.
It is also intended to accommodate, to a certain extent, taller ceilings. This is how we do it. We have basically evolved, going back to the teen plan and coming from that point with the original CRA. And at first, we had almost a choice. Under Lee County, you could either go under the standards of the overlay district or you can develop under the standards of your straight zoning district. There was no real incentive to go either way. It wasn't all that long ago that we got rid of that choice and started looking at strictly the standards of the overlay district. Now, for the purposes of the sub-districts 6A and 6B, so basically Old 41, those properties up front on that road, we're looking at a floor-area ratio of 1.2. And you're also looking at a residential density of up to 20 units per acre, but you have to get there through different bonus density techniques. Before we get into the bonus density, there was also a question on floor-area ratio and what it is and how it works, but here it is. Here's the magic formula. It's basically the building square footage that goes into the total land area. This is kind of how it can look like, and I'll go up here to point this out a little bit better. What you have are three different floor-area ratios. This is .5, this is 1, this is 2. And as you go further to the right, what the slide shows is if you were to take less of the site and go higher up, this is how the same floor-area ratio can be applied through different development standards. So, a floor-area ratio of 2 can be property line to property line of two stories. Or if you only want to take up a quarter of the lot, you can go eight stories. So, when we start talking about density and floor-area ratios, realize there's more to it than simply the number. It's also the development standards, open space, parking, things that go along with development that will impact how that number actually plays out. Now, we're gonna get into some of the density bonus calculations that we have. This is gonna be one that I wanted to cover because it's an important one, but it's also part of a study that you've already hired with Margaret Orshley to prepare for you. She's gonna be coming back, and I don't know the date of that, with information on affordable housing. If there's something that should apply that she has recommended that would go downtown, obviously that would be part of that discussion. Probably not appropriate today because we have paid for someone to actually go out and research this topic for the city. Floor-area ratio on commercial, there was also a question as to how it would apply, how certain applications were able to get certain densities and intensities. And this one, just keep in mind that if you're calculating a mixed-use, back in those 6A and 6B areas, the first floor commercial doesn't have to be counted. So basically, you're encouraging that mixed-use type of development. This gets into the area that we've already discussed with double counting, but if you want to get rid of this, we need to make a change to your comprehensive plan because you already have a policy that allows this. So, it doesn't apply to the entire building, it only applies to the first floor, but it is in place today. Are there any questions on this before I go, because I know there's been some discussions about this? No? Okay. This is also something that's been used on a couple of projects that have been approved downtown. And it is the increase in density for either providing public river access, unique design solutions, or contributing to the cost of improvements that we have already approved for the downtown area. It's been successful, especially when things were under construction. I think that it helped move things along. However, I think that this is gonna go into a larger group of things that we look at either requiring or dismissing as we go forward because I think that this gets to be confusing. If... and I'll get into this a little bit more later, but density should be density. If you figure out what you want and what's appropriate downtown, that should be the density that's allowed. Anything that falls under these type of situations should either be a requirement or something that should be waived. Here is what we're looking at when you're converting commercial square footage to residential square footage. This is also something that I've had a couple of questions on. And basically what it says is if you have a mixed-use development, you have to keep... I'm sorry, that shouldn't be six-dash, that should be 6D percent of the overall intensity should be commercial. The other 40 percent at 400 square feet per unit can be converted to residential. And so you will probably be seeing that come forward at your next meeting with the Complain Amendment. That's part of how he has calculated his density and intensity. All right. This is kind of where I would like to have a little bit of a discussion and where any of your input would be greatly appreciated. Based on what I have heard from you, generally in these discussions, we would recommend that we start revising our standards to reflect what you're looking for as your vision for Old 41. Right now, I don't think that your current regulations necessarily prohibit doing that, but they definitely don't promote doing that. And we think that a couple of changes in there could go a long way towards reflecting that vision. We've also heard some concerns about the length of some of your meetings and the ability to provide some clarity, so that way developers, council, and staff knows exactly what can be done, how it can be done, and there's a lot less for us to discuss by the time a project comes before you. And also, this might be a little bit confusing, but move away more from use-based regulations, move more towards a form-based code. And the idea behind this is it's easier to understand a picture than it is to read through several paragraphs of a narrative to understand exactly what you can do and what you can't do. If I'm looking at a picture, it's a lot easier for me to visualize, one, what I can do and what it's gonna look like when it's there. And also, two, when I present it to somebody, I can compare it to the regulations and show how it's similar and how it's consistent. Are there any questions on form-based codes or the idea of moving to something along these lines?
Is that gonna limit what can be built there? I mean, right now, we're not a sterile, we don't say Mediterranean only, you know, we give them options. If we go to form-based, are they still gonna have those options to come up with their own design? So that way, we're not kind of dictating the exact design that we want.
The form does not dictate the architecture, it simply dictates the box in which people build. What... how that box appears, what goes on there in terms of design, that goes under more architectural standards that you would also want to take a look at revising. So, when you see something you like or when you have a design that you like, you can quantify that in terms of how it should appear when somebody builds a building. So, the form-based code, to answer your question quickly, has no impact on the architecture. It simply talks about the massing and the location of that building on-site. So it would deal with your setbacks, your height, where a building should be on a property, the massing of that building, if there's supposed to be undulations in the facade, that type of thing.
So is there gonna be multiple pictures to look at then, or, I mean, what are we talking about here?
Depends on how much you want controlled or under the form-based code. Most of the time, you're gonna need one or two pictures per area. Other than that, you'd be looking at it from the front, you'd be looking at it from the back, that's about it. In fact, if somebody really knows what they were doing, they could probably do it with one picture.
But, I mean, if we're giving them a picture of what we want, to me, that would mean that's what they're gonna build, there's not much say in it. As it is now, we give them different choices on architecture and things like that, but as soon as you draw a picture up, it's gonna have a certain type of architecture in that picture. So I don't understand how you draw a picture without leaving, you know, having the different types of architecture in it.
What we currently have are setbacks, we have build-two lines along Old 41, we have height standards, we have requirements to setback at the second floor as you go up. We also have standards for balconies and those type of things. What the form-based code does is it simply takes those numbers that you see, how we currently have written, and it transitions that to more of a picture. So, it doesn't necessarily design your building, but it shows you how far out, how tall you can go. You can build less than that, but it basically shows you the limits of what you can build.
Okay, but what if we show something with a balcony, but I don't want to build a balcony?
If you don't require a balcony, then a balcony wouldn't be required. But if you put a balcony on there and you showed what it could look like, you could show them where it would be.
Well, I understand now the way things are, you know, you read through what's allowed to be done and you kind of fit what you want to do within that group. But I still think as soon as we draw a picture, that's, you know, what everybody's gonna do. It's gonna be cookie cutter, you know, vanilla, everybody's the same.
Well, I would be happy to bring back some examples. And if it's something that you wish to pursue, obviously it'd be something that we would recommend pursuing. If you decide not to pursue it, then we can make a look at making a revision based upon the current text that you have. So either way, we would be looking at promoting more of your vision through some amendments.
John, it might be helpful if you're gonna bring back examples is to show communities that have form-based codes and see what the result was, so we could see how they work together, if that's possible.
I'd be happy to do that.
I might suggest that by using the word picture, you know, you're introducing kind of a bit of a misnomer. From what I've understood, as you've explained it, the form-based code is not a picture, it's just basically if you're saying, you could think of it as a profile.
Yes, sir.
All right. And you're saying, and some of this is in writing already, but this is all trying to make it simple. And so, you've got to address the lot line at some point. You go up, you got a setback, and we have rules about that now, but it's just making this straightforward. And then you have a height. It would be like looking at, as an example, Fifth Avenue South, the buildings, but forgetting about the architecture, it's just the massing. Is that correct?
Yes, actually you did a very good job.
Okay.
Well, I'm not an architect, Fred's an architect, but that's what I understand.
But so then we're getting away from the floor-to-area ratio then? You know, the previous slide showed that, you know, if you wanted to go four stories, you could, but you can only build on a quarter of the lot. If you want to go two stories, you can build on the entire lot, but two stories high.
What you'd be looking at in terms of open space and setbacks would be reflected in that drawing, so actually I'll go back to that. If you decided that you were gonna have a form-based code and you wanted 50 percent open space and you had a 2 FAR, your drawing would essentially look something along these lines. Because you would have half the site that's not being used for the building, you'd have half the site that was. And so, it provides more detail in this, it shows undulations, it shows measurements, it shows setbacks. There is information that's provided in that that is not included here, but it is displayed more visually as opposed to as a narrative. And the reason why we had recommended it was not necessarily because it's better or worse. The code is a code. The bottom line is it appears to be easier to understand when somebody just picks it up. It's a lot easier to look at that visual description and see what you can do as opposed to having to go through and read through the text. If council decides to revise the text, it does not necessarily change what we're looking to do in terms of bringing your rules in line with your vision. It's just a different way to do it. So, if this is something that's proposed and is acceptable, that's fantastic. I think it's a step in the right direction. If you choose not to do it, I think you can come up with very effective regulations written narratively. And it doesn't necessarily prohibit you from achieving any goals. It would be essentially the same regulations displayed in a different format.
Fred?
Yeah, John, one thing that's kind of interesting, that is in your examples of what Fort Myers and Naples are doing, a couple of observations. Both pictures happen to show three-story buildings.
Yes, sir.
However, the upper stories tend to be a little taller than some of the ones we've talked about. That's... the other thing is, I'm just asking a question. When Naples did all this redevelopment, didn't... and even to a degree, Fort Myers, they kept existing buildings that kind of gutted them out and gave them a new life, I think, didn't they?
More in the case of Fort Myers than in Naples, but there was a certain degree of that, yes, sir.
Okay. I just wondered if any of that process would change? Because we're starting, we're in an area where we're primarily gonna be new buildings versus recycling old buildings.
You have a handful of buildings that I would assume would stay regardless of what goes forward. Yes, sir. And that gives you either a greater opportunity or more of a challenge, depending on your perspective, than what the city of Fort Myers had, yes, sir.
All right. The thing that I was noticing is that in both cases, even though they have, I think at least as wide, if not wider, streets, their buildings aren't as tall. I mean, it's just an observation, doesn't mean that I'm against a taller building, I just, you know, pictures do tell stories.
Yes, sir.
That's all.
Council, anything else? Okay, jump.
Okay. We'd probably also start looking at uses, especially from the commercial perspective, to get a better feel for what you're looking for as something that should be permitted by right and also those uses that should be prohibited. I would like to have probably an updated and a very clear list. In the past, we've... when this topic has come up, it's generally come up because either there was something that was being promoted or there was something that somebody heard they didn't want here, and so it was looking to prohibit. In this particular case, I'd almost like to take a look at this from an overall, maybe a higher level. What would you like to see downtown, and what would you like to see prohibited downtown? And kind of go from there. And as I said earlier, maybe do away with all those references to bonus density. I think that we spend enough time and money downtown that we should figure out what we want. And when we figure out what we want and what that density is, and we figure out it's appropriate, that's what it should be. And someone should be allowed to develop to that density, it should be very clear to them what they're allowed to do and how they need to do it. What form that takes is up to you, but the bonus density, I think, just clouds that clarity and prevents people from understanding truly what they need to do. And it also adds another level of complexity and stress because a lot of those bonus density provisions have to be reviewed by staff, presented to the zoning board, and then ultimately to you. So, they could be in the process for a year, essentially, before they find an answer to that.
The 20 units per acre, is that including bonus density, or is that?
That's with bonus density. It's 15 units an acre by right, the additional five units. And to make it even less clear, the 20 units, there are situations where you can exceed that. So, it's... it is a very nebulous target. And so, even from a self-interest perspective, I would like to make it a little more clear so that way everybody knows what you can do and I don't have to try to provide advice and look at the tea leaves for plans that are coming through a zoning process.
One last question, if I...
Yeah.
I'm just curious, which... does Fort Myers versus Naples, which one tends to have more parking garages?
They both, but Naples tends to have, I think they have more but smaller. Fort Myers has fewer but larger garages. But, don't hold me to that. I think Fort Myers has two, and I think Naples has four? Three? Naples has two.
And so, Fort Myers, do they not have a units per acre? You said they just have so many available units left and they're doling them out?
No, what they've done is, they have a unit per acre, but when you bring those apartments or condos in from a certain size, they calculate those at a different rate. So if you have 750 square foot or less, one-bedroom or studio condos or apartments...
But what's their units per acre, then?
I didn't go back to check that. I think they have different designations for different portions of the city. It's not a static number through all of downtown. Also, there's been some discussions on height. And currently, our height is either 53 or 55 in the land development code, it's 65 in the comprehensive plan. I'm sure everybody also would like some consistency in that number, so that way, whatever it is, it is. There's been a lot of talk for a reduction in height, or at least establishing somewhere between 40 and 45 feet. We've thrown that up there for discussion purposes, obviously, you can go higher, you can go lower, it's your decision. What we would recommend is that we require buildings to be built within a certain elevation to the existing sidewalk. As opposed... portions of downtown are in a flood zone. And if they were to build to that flood level, they would be three, possibly four, feet above the existing sidewalk, which prevents a more walkable downtown. When you do that, that area's gonna have to be flood-proof. So we're gonna have to put some standards in the code that would state that, yes, we expect you to build within a certain level of the existing grade. However, for those portions that are still within a flood zone, they need to be flood-proofed so that way, in the event of a storm, the building remains safe. This is not uncommon. I've probably two... I know of two buildings that we've looked at in the past six months that have proposed doing this. One has been approved, one will be sent to you shortly. And the difference in building the elevation or providing flood-proofing, the way that the technology has advanced, really does not impact the safety of the building, so.
Flood-proofing, is it still habitable on the first floor, or are we talking businesses and parking on the first floor?
Well, it would be habitable, but I would recommend that you require a non-residential use on that first floor, especially along Old 41. I think one of the things that has been a... it hasn't been voiced that loudly, but it is definitely a concern of your staff, is that Old 41 turns into a large condominium complex and does not provide the amount of commercial square footage that downtown should. And as a result, I think we need to provide some minimum standards for, we'll also say, non-residential space. At a minimum, looking at the first floor of all those buildings as being non-residential and maybe going from there in certain areas.
So, what's considered flood-proof? Does it mean there's no water gonna be getting inside that, or it just means the building's gonna be able to handle having the water inside of it?
What... the way it's been described to me is there are gaskets along a steel plate that are screwed into the wall. And as a result, it forms a seal that water does not get passed. And they build that to an... higher than the flood elevation. So, essentially what you would have is a building that water does not penetrate, the wall's below that seal. The benefit is, when there's not a storm, you don't have to climb stairs to go into a commercial building downtown. I touched on this briefly before, aesthetics. We've all looked at the pictures, and I have them at later part of this presentation for downtown that were prepared for the city. This goes back to what I said before. Your current regulations don't necessarily prohibit that, but they don't promote it. And so, I know, Mike, you had mentioned the color palette at the last meeting. That's probably something that needs to be revised if you're looking at buildings of these colors. But at a minimum, how do we handle these porches? How do we handle this whole Florida architecture? And if there's other forms of architecture you want down there, how do we handle that architecture to accommodate this development pattern in this particular portion of the city? Like I said, I don't think your rules prohibit that, but they definitely don't promote it. And also, parking. I would recommend you take a look at standard... I would recommend you take a look at standards for a minimum and a maximum number of spaces that you could provide onsite, and above and beyond that, I would also look at a fee for those spaces that needed to be provided offsite. How you do that, what that number is, is something that is going to be based on your priorities, but the reason why I say that is you're in a very good position right now. You have enough parking downtown because you just built it. As buildings and projects come online, the number of excess spaces is going to decrease quickly. You've talked before about where are we going to put parking, how are we going to do it, what should it look like? Well, that discussion could probably come a little bit on the heels of this discussion, so I don't know how much detail we can get into today, other than the fact that you know as projects get built, people are going to park there. How much parking do you want people to provide onsite? How much parking do you want to be able to provide offsite? And how do you want that triggered? Meaning, do you want it to be triggered as a milestone with a project? Do you want to identify areas for that parking before we get into serious development? There's a number of ways to do it. You just don't want to get behind the eight ball, essentially, when it comes to funding. Otherwise, you're going to have five or six projects that have been built downtown, it's going to come time to look for a parking garage, you're not going to have a funding source other than your general fund. So just a, probably a word of warning, that this is something that you need to look at today. Like I said, what that number is, is probably not as important as the fact that you come up with a number that reflects your priorities.
What is that number like, for example, in Naples?
That number is $32,000, just under $32,000 per space.
Do we know what it costs, a rough idea, to build a structure? Is that quoted by space? I have no idea.
Depending on the design, it's about $24,000.
$24,000?
Yes, sir. And, you know, that can go down to 22, it can go up to 30, depending on how you design it and the size.
Okay.
Oh, Fred? Sorry, I didn't see you.
Question on the parking?
Yes, sir.
Right now, if I'm going to build, let's say, 200 units of housing residential, don't I have to provide parking on Old 41 onsite for all of those residents?
We have, we have the ability to use some of those spaces that have been built. The problem is, is that the improvements have been made without a revision to your code. So we have assumed for smaller projects, they could take advantage of what was there. Now, what we've looked at recently, the projects that have been proposed have provided parking onsite, so it hasn't been an issue. Going forward, though, you're probably going to want to have, have your priorities reflected in the standards, so that way, when somebody doesn't want to provide all of the spaces onsite, we know which direction you want us to go.
I would think for residential, you'd want the parking onsite.
I think you'd want a certain percentage of it onsite, yes, sir, probably not all of it, depending on the size of the project, but a certain amount would be appropriate, and almost be necessary.
Why wouldn't we want 100%? I'm not talking about visitors, I have a few visitors, but it seems to me, everybody that's got a home, there should be a parking space for a car. They may not all use a car.
I'm not saying that we shouldn't park the cars, what I'm saying is that if we're looking to focus the density and intensity generally along Old 41, we want that space to be used for building. If you use that space for parking, then you lose that space for building. You could only use it for one thing, except for the condominium in Miami that has the garages and the high-rises. But you really want to focus a certain amount of parking onsite, especially for residential, but for those other spaces, if we work to provide spaces that essentially a developer's paying for, offsite but within close proximity, you're still parking those units, you're just not parking them onsite. They may be across the street, maybe, you know, maybe a half block away, but that seems to be a way that you can maximize those areas, you're looking to focus that density and intensity, and still make them functional.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Just a piece of information we'd like to supply today. Councilmember Forbes had asked for a list of city-owned property downtown that might be able to be used for parking. We'd like to supply that list today, as well as community development's feedback on some of the challenges for each of those. But there are a number of locations that we own that we might be able to supply some additional parking, and of course, we would expect that would be for events and for commercial parking, not residential. So we will supply that to you today as well, okay?
Great. Thanks, Carl.
And this goes back, and the reason why I've said that parking is going to dovetail from this is unless you know what size units you want, unless you know what to expect in terms of development, how many parking spaces do you need? What can you anticipate in terms of generation? It's a difficult question to answer. So as we come through this discussion with a feel for what counsel wishes to do, we can at least come up with a guess as to the impact and the need for that parking. One of the other areas that's been discussed is stormwater, and I know that there's been discussion on a stormwater utility for citywide. This also might be something you might want to consider for downtown. You have invested a lot of money in the stormwater in that area. There's been talk, but no real council discussion as to how you want to handle that, if there's going to be connection fees, whether there's not going to be connection fees, what you would like to do. And I already covered the affordable housing earlier as something that we'll need to come back to you when Margaret Worsley has prepared her recommendations.
And so the stormwater, the whole reasoning behind doing the stormwater project was to incentivize development downtown. So if we're going to start charging a fee to connect to it, then it's no longer really an incentive.
It's something you can argue both ways. You can say the city has made a large investment, and that's recouping a portion of the investment. There's the incentive for businesses to come downtown, and this is an area that you don't have to provide your stormwater, so therefore, you can take advantage of more of your property. They're both strong philosophies, it's really just a matter of which way you want to go. So it's an area that you should discuss, but not an area that I would definitely tell you, you have to go one way or the other.
I would think it's not really an incentive if you're going to charge them for it, so.
Agree. You, obviously, if you decided to form a utility or charge a connection fee, it would be a policy decision that that was an investment downtown, and the idea of connecting a connection fee would be recouping a portion of that investment.
Yeah, well, we're trying to get development down there to increase the value and increase the tax ratables down there.
Yes, sir.
So I mean, you're going to get money back one way or the other, but, you know, I'd prefer the non-picking their pocket when they're trying to build something.
And if that's the direction that the council wishes to go, we are happy to oblige. I put in a handful of these pictures, they're different perspectives from what you've already seen, and the reason why I've done this is because when we're looking, especially at the aesthetics, there's a lot of things that really aren't-
Are we requiring the hot air balloons?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir, a minimum number of balloons per unit.
And the birds.
And a sign that says, "Look."
The birds, oh, there they are, yeah.
The balloons, yeah, for sure.
However, when you're looking at buildings that have these balconies, when you're looking at how this is oriented to the site, especially some of these buildings that are a little bit further away, unfortunately, some of the more interesting buildings have less visibility, how are these going to be handled, and how are you going to promote this type of architecture if this is one of the forms of architecture you want? There seems to have been some general acceptance of this design and how that played out. Now, obviously, that's not the scale, and no one could ever build something that looks just like that, but that aside, the idea of those buildings, the idea of how those are designed, was something, it sounded like counsel was in favor of.
Right.
If this is what you want, and only what you want, this is what we need to have in terms of our regulations, to promote this and prohibit other things that don't look like this.
It looks nice, but doesn't make sense to a builder to build that.
The question's going to be the gingerbreading, and how you want to handle some of that. The idea of putting balconies on a building, especially when there's residential to it, I don't think is above and beyond. How those buildings are, how those balconies are set up, what's required, what's optional, where are you going to give them flexibility to design their own site versus what you're going to require to be there? That's going to be the trick. The idea of allowing or requiring balconies on a building that's generally Old Florida in style, I don't think that has much of an impact. It may be someone's preference, it may not be someone's preference in terms of appearance.
Well, I like the balconies. I mean, we have parades, a parade down there, and, you know, it'd be nice for people to be out there watching the parade go by, but, I mean, I don't have a problem with the balcony, I'm just saying, you know, an artist can draw anything they want, because it's just, you know, ink and, or paint on paper. It's a lot harder to actually design a building that's actually going to function and put it up. Anybody can draw a facade.
Well, there's going to be, this goes kind of back to what we were talking about before, there needs to be two things that are done. You need to better define the massing of a building, whether that's done through a form-based code, whether that's done through revising your narrative, it doesn't matter, but that needs to be done. The second thing is your architectural and appearance standards. Those aesthetics are very important, and I think that what we need to figure out is, is this going to be the only style we're looking at, or are we going to accept and maybe promote other styles, so that you have more than one that's down there? Right now, everyone has said, "We like Old Florida, we want Old Florida." Old Florida to us means something along those lines, and that's fantastic. If that's the way we want to go, it needs to be reflected in our requirements. If we want to allow other forms of architecture with the same type of massing, that's perfectly acceptable, we just need to know so that way we can put those standards in place.
That's not a form-based code issue, that's an architecture issue.
Yes, sir. That's what I'm saying, there's two entirely different things. The form base is going to handle your massing, your architecture is going to handle all of the aesthetics.
Fred, did you have something?
Yeah, I just want to make an observation again. If you notice on the left, there is a four-story building, but the rest of them are all threes.
Except all the way to the right, it's four also.
And then you, so you have a lot of up and down. We, what I think would look, I think having various heights buildings would be better than they're all three, or they're all four, or all two. Now, I don't know how we do that trick, but I think it-
Well, there's a number of ways.
To make it more the character of everybody's previous vision, I think you need to do something like that.
Even with simple regulations, I think that people are going to want different things. Now, you're going to have a lot of, "I want to build as much as I can build," but you are going to have people that are not going to want to build as much.
Last comment, I think that we should not get into a situation where let contractors build homes, apartments, condos, to where they got to go to a parking garage across the street or down the block, because when you have these reins that we do have, it's not really good. I think having retail where you have a parking garage and they put the cars in there and all that, I think that's good, but I think we ought to minimally have one parking spot right real close to that unit on the site, or maybe one and a quarter or something like that, and that would take care of the number of cars. Because most people, it wouldn't be too bad if your second car was stashed in a parking garage. But I think having one per unit minimally on the site with a few, precious few for visitors would be the preferred thing. That's just my own point of view, so.
But, you know, I mean, these are all good suggestions that we should consider, but if you put them on site, they're not going to look like this.
Not necessarily.
I mean, where are you going to put them? They're on the front, unless you put them in the back or something.
Maybe in the back.
Yeah. So I do think that the articulation and the differences in height are important, and I'm not quite sure how you would get that through the massing criterion.
You could look at having a lot, properties on a corner can have additional height, properties on the corner can have additional height, maybe uses have additional height. There's a number of ways to do it.
But you would do that through some kind of regulation, not by the pictures.
It would, well, it would be reflected in the pictures, but it would be stated as to why we're doing it, what was going on.
And then the other thing is that, you know, if you have a certain density there, why wouldn't the developers all want to have four-story buildings? I mean, how do you handle that? Because they would want to take it to the limit because it was beneficial to them, right?
Some do and some don't. It's going to be a situation where, depending on the size of the lot, how the property was laid out, maybe it makes more sense to build less. I've been involved in decisions where we were looking to build 247,500 square feet of commercial spaces before parking garages, and stayed up till 2:00 in the morning doing performance based upon that. At a meeting at 9:00 in the morning, everybody decided it would be just as much profit if we built 127,000 square feet and ditched the garages. So the intensity of that project dropped by half in about 30 seconds. So it can happen, and just because you're allowed to build something does not mean that there's the same incentive, either financially or marketability-wise, to do that. Properties are different, I'm-
Sure.
Those properties are different, markets are different, uses are different.
And then the other concern I have is that I do think that Old 41 is relatively narrow, and I happen to be at the Fort Myers, just at that picture where you were showing there the other day, and that's a much wider street than we have, and they have, what, three stories or two stories or something? But it isn't exist, they're tall, but it was a renovation, obviously, because the buildings are all old and have sort of character. So I would definitely not want to have a, I guess what they call it, a corridor effect, where you go down and it's just-
Canyon, yeah.
-building up here, canyoning. You know, that I think should be definitely part of the code. And I wasn't on the council when they decided on this picture here, but I would be interested in having some variety in the architecture, so that we wouldn't just, you know, have sort of the same thing all the time.
I think that if you look, and to go back to your first point, I think that the right-of-way for Old 41 and some of those downtown streets of Fort Myers are similar, where you see the difference is the width of the sidewalk. A lot of those areas, you'll see sidewalks that are 10 feet plus, where they, especially where they have restaurants and outdoor seating areas, and that definitely adds to that width between the buildings, and you do notice that difference.
I think the streets are wider, too.
John, a question that Amy asked, and she asked at the last meeting as well, and Fred's asking the same question, why wouldn't everybody go to four floors? Is there a way to play with the floor-area ratio to get that? In other words, to address that question? By which I mean, so let's say you said 40 feet, let's say you said four floors, but your FAR is not four. It's something less than that. So you could have a situation where some people might decide to go up four, but some people might just go up three and get squatter and fatter.
Yes, sir. Oh, that's definitely doable.
Well, I'm not saying it's a magic bullet, but I'm just trying to think about it.
And we're only at 1.2?
Yes, sir. But we, we're at 1.2.
We're at 1.2, but that's-
You look at density and intensity in separate parts.
Right. We're at one, I'm sorry, but we're at 1-2 commercial, we're not 1-2 density.
Correct.
Right. You're talking about an FAR where you're doing, you're basically doing a whole building FAR. So that's what I hear you saying.
Correct.
Including the non-commercial.
And there are ways, there's different ways to look at that if you decide to go down the FAR path. Just because you've established this massing doesn't mean you also can't have density controls, it doesn't mean you wouldn't want to have minimum and maximum sizes for different types of units. So a one-bedroom would be between 750 and 1,100 square feet, something along those lines, and so you would have different ways to look at it, so you knew what was going to go in there. And the reason why I say that is you would need to know how to accommodate the impact of those developments.
So we're only 1.2 for commercial?
Correct.
Okay, because I was trying to figure out how you would ever get to three or four stories with a 1.2.
Well, this goes back, this ties directly-
Without having a very narrow building, and, you know.
This ties directly back into the double-dipping question, because depending on how you look at it, if you have a one-acre piece of property, if you allow somebody to calculate that entire one acre for both the 1.2 FAR plus your residential density, then you start looking at maybe a taller building. If you state that, "I've got to designate a portion of my site that I use to calculate my commercial intensity, and then another portion for my residential density," so if you split it in half, half an acre would give you 0.6 FAR, plus half an acre would give you seven and a half units, or seven units, so you'd have seven units plus a 0.6 FAR on your property. So depending on how you interpret that, greatly impacts the size and scale of those buildings. Right now, we're looking to separate those, so there's not the double-dipping aspect.
Do you have a sketch or something that just basically shows form-based, so to clear up, anything that should be cleared up?
Actually, if you want me to bring it up at your council meeting, I could probably give you something that I can print out for you and produce.
Yeah.
That way, it'd be a little clearer about what we're discussing.
Yeah, I think I am, but it's not like it's intuitive for, you know? You looking for somebody to say something?
I know that somebody has something else to say about density.
No, not really.
What would counsel like us to do going forward with this? Is this something that, the idea of a floor-area ratio is something that appeals to you, or is this something that you would like to avoid?
Well, I'd like to see something that's going to actually make it easier for developers Well, I, I'd like to see something that's going to actually make it easier for developers to know what they can build and actually build. I mean, down there, we're watching more buildings being knocked down right now than are being built. So we want something to happen down there, not, not go backwards.
Yes.
So I would agree with that. And I think if we have a process that more clearly says what we want, that clarity is going to benefit the residents, it's going to benefit developers, it's going to benefit community development, it's going to benefit staff, all of staff. And that's why I like the basic concept of a form-based code. Not to be combined with the architecture point, that's different. And that is, so let me ask you a question. So first of all, what area are we dealing with here? We're dealing with the corridor of 041, what, from Front Street to Felts?
Essentially, yes.
And from where, from Terry to?
6A and 6B are really what we're talking about. But essentially, I would recommend that you look at it from Dean to Terry. Because, because that area is something you want similar massing.
So I'd like, this is not, we're not voting here. You know, but, but if I might just reflect on this stuff. I think a form-based code which has basic, simple elements of a maximum height, in my view, a maximum height is 40 feet. Requirement of how close you need to be to the street. We don't want suburban, right? We want it near the street. And then we need to address the canyon issue. And that requires, in my view, and I think we have it in the code already, but in terms of simplification, a setback once you go up a floor. But once you do a setback, I think you can go that route, too, that building on the left. In other words, it doesn't mean you have to set back and go straight up. It means you can set back, go up, but have porches-
Yes.
-out there to fill it. So that would be one suggestion from one council person. I do like the effort you've put into it. In terms of, want me to keep going, Peter, or do you want to take one at a time?
No, that's great.
And then I, I also like the simplification on the density, whether we go an FAR conversion right route or a straight density route. Because what we've got going on, in my view, with density is, we got like a sticker number. But then we have the real number by the time everybody competes, completes all the math they can in terms of, I'm buying my way out of this, I'm buying my way out of that. To me, the affordable housing bonus is not so much affordable housing, it's just what you pay to not put affordable housing here. Obviously, we want it in town. And the same goes for the others. So I, what the number is, I'm not sure. But I like your idea of, let's keep it simple and let's come up with a number, whether that's 20 or 25, period, that's it. And whether you get there through an FAR computation or you just say the residential is 20 to 25 and whatever in the ground floor is commercial. I don't think we spent 20 to 30 million dollars to have apartments all along the first row.
Correct.
It's my, well, correct, that's my, my view.
That's what I took from your conversations.
Let me see my notes here. On the parking, I think that's our high-class problem that's right in front of us. So I don't know, to address Fred's point, it's kind of like, if everybody does their own parking on their own site, are we kind of, I guess it can fit. I mean, the, the one thing we had in front of, we could have in front of us, I guess it does fit. But once again, I think that requires more thought. Because we, do we just want like suburban look? It's Amy's point. I mean, did we spend all this money to put cars in there? So maybe it's something like what Fred was saying, a little bit of, at a minimum one, but then some payment as appropriate toward a parking garage. I, I think we were going to need a parking garage sooner than we think. And to put money that way. Then on the aesthetics, I'd like to have some kind of streamlined process. But we've been around the block of what does Old Florida mean? And it seems to mean 10 different things. I guess I'd like more input on that from staff. But I wouldn't, I wouldn't, that's aesthetics versus the form. Anyhow, those are my thoughts.
Greg, did, I know you were coming in, I didn't know if you wanted to jump in. Okay. Amy?
Well, another feature that I liked in Fort Myers was like the alleys. You know, you could go down there, there was development along there. So I'm not sure how we would provide for that either. That's why I have some concern about where we're going to put the parking. Because you want to have activity. You don't just want to walk along 041, you want to go down the side things. And a lot of these pictures are along the river, so, you know, that's a total different look. So if we're going to extend, I think we have to understand how it extends out in addition to along 041.
And I think I would just add, and, you know, I've said it before, but it's been a while since I've said it, so I'll say it again, master the obvious. But the city does own quite a bit of property down there. But I'm not so sure that I know exactly what it is, what, 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 you know, what can be done there, what can't be done there. Do we need to market that property? Do we need to let people know it's for sale? Do we need to roll in what we need to the master plan? You know what I'm saying? I'm, I'm just trying to, we're, we're going through this, and this is fantastic. But I'm also saying if we're a little more proactive with the lands that we currently own down there, I think that that needs to fit into this equation. I think we, you know, we, we have the icing and the cake batter, but I think we're missing the eggs and the milk at the moment.
Correct. And I think that, you know, you've got some properties down there that are park spaces. And you can determine whether you want to keep them as park spaces or not. You have other areas that were purchased in an event turn when the market improves for redevelopment. And then you have other properties. So the property with the bioreactor was always the one that was given the informal nod. That's where parking would go without anybody formally voting on it. So right now, I think you've got a situation where you have property, there's probably a few of them, it would be appropriate. But I would say it even goes almost a step further, although I like your direction, Mayor. When do you want to start looking at putting it in? Do you want to start tying the location and spaces with, with milestones of development? Do you want to identify areas simply, this is where we're going to build our parking regardless of where development happens? You know, they're all going to be decisions that are going to be very important as we go forward.
Sure.
I think, no, go ahead, Greg.
I was just going to piggyback on what you said, Mayor. Could we do an evaluation of what property we do own down there? And what would be more marketable for retail, for whatever? And this one, hey, this is a little off the beaten path. This would be a good place to put a parking garage rather than market it for a retail store or-
So the information you'll receive today will have a large map that will indicate all of the properties the city owns downtown. And you'll be able to determine approximately how many spaces you could put on there in terms of if you want it for parking. Some of the lots don't make a lot of sense for parking, maybe temporarily. But over the long haul, will probably be needed for economic development purposes. So, and we will get that to you and you'll be able to see what's available, at least in what, what we own down there now.
You know, and if we're, and, and I know we're not doing this, but let's just assume we're playing chicken and egg. Let's not play chicken and egg. Let's the city go on the offensive. Show developers, obviously, we're 20 million serious, 30 million serious. Let, let, show them how serious we are on these properties. Whatever form that may take, whatever direction that may take. Lay the cards on the table, total transparency. Not trying to hijack the developers for anything. And let's, in this economy, it's go time. I mean, it's go time. And I, what I don't want to do, and not that anybody up here wants to do it either, I don't want to rush this, but it's go time. It's time to hit the button, it's time to go. It's time to figure out what we want. If we want a front porch, great. If we don't want a front porch, but I don't want to lose sight of what's going on around us with the local economy, the national economy. It's a good time to act. And that's all I'm trying to say.
I would agree. I, I mean, we're just glancing over this for 30 seconds. And I guess my reaction back to, back to John, or even Jay, or anybody in community development to say, you know, let's use the South Lyles Drainage Area where it shows 80 spaces. Is that something that may be more marketable for retail versus this? That's what I'm looking for, for you guys to go out and either put your thumb on the market and say, these places would be more, better served to be parking spots than retail spots. Instead of letting us say, oh, we see a big number here of 114, we need 114. But it may be better served as, as retail shop rather than a parking lot. That's what I kind of looking towards either San Vincent, the community development to say, okay, what's going to give us our biggest bang for the buck down there to recoup some of this money? And then what's left over, we'll make into either parking garages, parking spots, parking lots, whatever. Because as we all know, just from beach parking, parking's not a, not a, not a moneymaker.
No, no. And it's not cheap.
And it's not cheap.
Just picking up on this point. I think, and it kind of plays into this whole billing articulation point. I do think the property that we own, at a minimum, we ought to start figuring out ideally what we would like. I could tell you what I would like, all right? I, I, to me, we didn't spend 20 to 30 million dollars to put up an apartment house on city property. When we were sitting around in previous council and Peter was on there, you know, I remember Peter talking about San Antonio as an example, other people were talking about other areas. But, you know, when I think of something like Bamboo, and I think of, for example, that place that opened out where Old Vincenzo's restaurant used to be down on the beach, all right? They put up the, what do you call it, Cheeky Hut, and they were off to the races, okay? That's the type of investment that I'd like the city, that we ought to figure out. So I agree, but I want to refine a little bit. I think we ought to not just say, doors open, everybody come in with ideas. And that's nice. But why don't we just try to figure out what we want? And, and my view is, if we had a happening restaurant down there, that would be the torch that would kick off a lot of development. And, and I think that investment should be made on the city property. And frankly, that could be low relying. And that could have a lot of aesthetics associated with it. Not to name names, I'm just talking about if a Doc Ford's were to be there. Or if, what's the one on the beach, the one I, uh-
We got Doc Ford's, you've got-
Doc, or the one I'm thinking of. But also the one I'm trying to think of where Vincenzo's was.
Oh, it's Coconut.
Coconut, you know, something like that.
Coconut Jazz.
I guarantee you, all of a sudden, everybody would figure out where 041 is.
Yeah, no, I agree.
So I'd rather, not rather, I would take your idea and I would say, let's, let's, if we're going to do it, let's go get somebody like that. I don't mean those people.
No, but you mean market it for that type of atmosphere.
And then guess what? We've got some lower buildings and that's great. Some guys go up for four stories. But not everybody is.
Yeah, and it's just like, you know, if you go to most downtowns, and we'll pick on downtown Fort Myers. I mean, most of those are hinged on Capones, a Lodge, you know, even a, what is it? French Connection was there, the Standard, all those are restaurants. Staples down there, you're not going down there every once a week for the bike night. You're going down there for the restaurants.
I mean, not to play developer here, but we are developer because we own the property. I think, I think restaurants got probably number one. Restaurants probably number, considering where the retail market is. You know, we've done a lot of talking about retail and retail downtown. And I got to tell you, I mean, you know, Promenade, God bless those guys, they bought it, they've done great work in it. There's a lot of empty spaces in there. And it's sitting outside a community with 6,000 homes. So I do-
A hotel.
And a hotel. And I think, I think restaurants the way to go, at least one man's opinion.
Right. No, I know, and I would, you know, add, you know, you need a little micro brewery. I'm not, I'm not even saying a separate place, a same place, whatever.
Right.
Something that's going to draw people down there. People like to eat and they like to drink. I mean, I hate to, you know, whatever. But, so what do we need to do to make that happen, right?
Well, why don't we, we can either have a group here do it, or we can ask staff to come up with ideas and come to us. But off the top of my head, I would, I mean, I have thought about this. I, I do think we should try to go recruit a first class. By first class, I don't mean the Palm. Right, right, all right. The type of place that fits into a natural environment on the river that serves food.
Well, I think also, we've, I think I'm, I know I've mentioned it before, but I mean, reach out to our partners at the Chamber and EDC.
Okay. I was just going to say, because I, I'm not sure if you guys received the call yet, but Don Thompson called me and we're trying to figure out a time to get together. So seeing how, here we are, there's no sunshine problems, here we are, we're all here. That, that, that will be my suggestion for what I'd like the EDC to do.
Well, and, and that's it. I mean, the EDC has done some good things. And, you know, they've done it with, with retail, or let's call it industry, whether it's Turk, or whether it's Turks, or whether it's whomever. Now let's, you know, put them out there to hunt for something else. Now this is our new thing. We've got some light industrial, now let's go with, we've got our office space filled up, this is what we need.
There are a lot of communities throughout the country that have these riverside sites. And it would be nice for us to borrow from them. Because some of them use the, the rivers in better ways than others. And certainly, you want a happening place. You want someplace where people can really stroll. I mean, the advantage is, is that you, you could have the luxury of open space where you could stroll. You could have, you know, musicians, you can do all that stuff where it's kind of hard to do that along 041 because there's just not enough room to do that.
And access to the water.
Excuse me?
Access to the water.
Access to the water, absolutely, yeah. So let's look at a couple of those places that isn't, you know, like, it's all over. You know, Arizona has them, Phoenix, all that stuff.
And I think we're at the point where, and that looks fabulous, it looks wonderful. And of course, you know, with some modifications, whatever. But let's forget about that. Let's go get one anchor downtown and let's put all our energy into that. And, you know, the, the First to the Dance, well, guess what? The First to the Dance gets the premier property on the river, if they want it, if the numbers work out, right? If they're, if through this process, we attract somebody that, you know, maybe would be a, a smaller business or a smaller what-have-you. Because there will be residual businesses from this effort that we will find. Well, maybe they need a smaller lot, maybe it's down the street, maybe it's one block back and, and over two blocks, or whatever the case may be.
I, I thought there was some entity that had designed something down there and it didn't fall to-
Yeah, but that was not what-
Was that longitude or latitude or?
No, that's our town.
Oh.
We're not doing that.
It wasn't what we wanted.
And why not, though? I mean, that was restaurants first floor, residential above. It was a great project. I mean, there was a lot of feet dragging going on and, you know, the project didn't get off the ground before the economy collapsed. But, you know, we can want all we want, but it doesn't mean it's feasible for somebody to build. If, if we put an RFQ out there with different things that we want to see down there, let's see what proposals come in and we can choose the best of the best. But if everything comes in and it's not something that we're all seeing in our heads, that should tell you something that what we want to see isn't going to work. And nobody wants to build it because it's not going to work.
We'll find out.
So.
We'll find out.
I mean, otherwise, if we want to put up a restaurant, maybe we should just build a restaurant.
I have a little contrary opinion about going forward with this because I do think that the private entities should come first. Because as you have a demonstration project, and I think it raises the value of our project. So I, that is probably the most premier property in all, this whole corridor. So I have some concern about going in this order, you know, but I'm willing to listen to anybody.
Right. Oh, absolutely.
And my answer to Mike is that if it is the case that we don't come back, if you pursue that methodology, and we don't come back with something that we want, we should just pull back. Because then, then we definitely should wait until something else happens elsewhere in the corridor until we develop-
Okay, I mean, it, it sounds like we're talking about, you know, the, the prime location right there on the river. We're talking about just putting a single restaurant there.
No.
Which is, well, I mean, that's what it sounds like to me. I'm, I'm talking, you need restaurant first floor, you need residential above. We're talking mixed use on that corridor. And, and we're going to talk about just bringing in a restaurant? In our next meeting, we're going to be voting on a, a soon-to-be-empty restaurant shell right there. So I mean, if we want to bring on, in a restaurant, we should be bringing them in for that one that will be needing to rent out soon.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Carl. So just to remind council that we did put together an RFQ, actually, some number of years ago now, and sent it out. And it was clearly premature in terms of time. And, and actually, we just got told we were out ahead of time, it was too early, so we withdrew it. The thought there was that we would throw a bunch of things out in terms of what the city would like to see and see what the development community would come back with. And we might like it or we might not. We have had some people who would come in and say, gee, if that's the city's property, I'd like to build X, Y, and Z there. But that's all they were proposing. So they weren't looking to develop the entire site. They were looking to put one purpose, one building on the river. And that's fine and good. And I don't think, I'm not reading any of the council members as saying- And that's fine and good, and I don't think, I'm not reading any of the council members as saying you only put one thing on that property. It's clearly too valuable for that, correct? My concern would be, my caution would be, is that if you put one building in there on the river, you have to be so careful about what implications there are for future developments in that same area, building around that building. Does it make that property more valuable, um, or, or less attractive? Because something is already there, one-story restaurant, whatever it might be on the river. And so I, I think there's a number of things to consider here, um, but clearly we get the message that you need a happening restaurant. We absolutely agree with that, absolutely.
But I think we need a happening area. I mean, everyone, I think there's a lot more to having a, a river that's vibrant than just putting a restaurant there. So I think we need to go to these alternative areas and find out what combinations they bring in arts, you know, restaurants, whatever. Because, and then ask people who are experienced to help us here.
I.e. a vision.
A vision, right. I mean, I think, you know, exactly, we always need a vision.
Well, no, I mean, that's what we're talking about.
But.
Going forward from today, actually I think your discussion on the property and figuring out how to get this thing kickstarted is good. Because otherwise we just sit here and talk about regulations all day. But we do need to have those in place. So really going forward, you've got a meeting on the twenty-first and you're going to have a transmittal hearing as part of that city council meeting for the Terry Street Assemblage. February twenty-third, you have your zoning workshop. What I'll, first step, and we'll keep building on this, but first step, if you could tell me if you would like to have a discussion or to finish this discussion and maybe figure out whether you want to do this form-based code idea, how you want to proceed with density, uh, some of these fundamental decisions that really start putting us down the path you want us to go. When do you want that discussion to take place, knowing what you have on your calendar already?
Well, I'd like to give a suggestion if council agrees that we give some general, we can't vote, but give a consensus and general direction now. I'm going to kick this thing around forever. And my, my, and my notion on that, leaving aside the point you made, Peter, which is probably more important than all of this, all right? But in terms of the specific assignment he's got, uh, is have them play with a form-based code in this corridor. Forty feet, a setback off, on the second floor. Some basic, have them play with a basic number for density. So we're not like having this sticker number, well, it's eight point six, but it's really thirty. Whether that number should be twenty, twenty-five, I don't know, but have them come back with that. And then address the, also the parking issue. And, um, with some sense of, we don't want to over egg this, but, um, some, if they're not going to have adequate parking on site, and I agree with Fred, there should be at least a certain amount of adequate parking on site. Some dollar amount put toward a parking garage. Now, we're not talking thirty-five thousand dollars, we're not, we're not fifty-even in the South here. But that would be my suggestion, give them direction to do that, if there's a consensus on that.
And I'd like to see a little more before you go too, too far down this path. Bring, bring back some form-based codes, see if that's what we really want to do.
I will have something for you to look at coming up at your council meeting. I'll run back to the office and print something out, so at least we have a feel for what it looks like.
That works. Fred?
Yeah.
Well, I think that things will clarify further depending on what happens with this proposed con-plan amendment. Because that's, that's a fairly major project. And if it goes forward, that in itself will, could stimulate some of these things, may actually be the other way. But I do think that that, you, uh, the decisions we're talking about today are going to somewhat depend on what happens when we have that hearing.
Yeah, I, I don't think this is something that could be done before that hearing, so.
No, but I think it'll influence what, what things we may do depending on how that goes.
Yeah, the hearing would influence this.
I thought we were trying to decide what we wanted.
Well, I, I know, but we, we have people that have spent years planning stuff already. And now at the last minute, we're going to pull out the rug from under them because we want to change our mind on stuff? I, I don't think we're doing a zoning in progress here.
Point of order, point of order, point of order, Mr. Mayor. Excuse me, if you'd like to state your view, please state it, but please don't characterize it as pulling rugs out from under people. We have a process here in the city of Benita Springs. And if you're not comfortable with the process, fine. But if you don't think council, when it spends thirty million dollars, should be focusing on what its vision is for the area, well, I'm sorry, I disagree. With respect.
Mr. Ray?
Yeah.
Well, I, I'm just saying, you know, we do have a process, we have, uh, you know, something coming forward at the next meeting. Um, and, and right now we're talking about changing things before that comes up. So I'm just saying that, you know, I, we should follow the process. We have something coming forward, we need to, you know, go forward with that and when we go to the meeting, we'll see how things like.
And what's the date on that meeting, John, once again?
Twenty-first, it's your next council meeting.
Yeah. Council, is that good with everybody, the twenty-first?
Well, that's, that's where we're going to hear the transmittal.
We're going to hear the trans.
Right, understood.
Okay, and then you have a zoning workshop on the twenty-third, which is the Friday of that week. I was thinking at some point after that, because you're going to have some information that comes out of this workshop as well, that theoretically would give some additional direction. So really, we'd be looking at March, coming back with some of this stuff to present to you. Are you looking to get a rush on this and the seventh, or do you want to look at it like the twenty-first? Because those are your, or we could look at a different meeting date if you want to go outside your normally scheduled meetings.
I mean, I think those dates in February sound good and would it give you enough time for March seventh to have?
If you do March seventh, it's, it's going to be, it's going to be, there's going to be some placeholders in what's presented to you. Meaning that I know that the density we're probably going to look at downtown is going to be, for the sake of argument, between twenty and thirty. So I'm going to give you twenty-five and we're going to have a discussion because it's right in the middle, that type of thing. If you want to push this back a little bit further, obviously some of those details can be answered.
Let me make a suggestion, maybe it's a bad one. Why don't we plan on every council meeting moving forward, even if it's a small little segment of whatever it is? Well, we're going to take big chunks, we're going to take small bites, we'll take medium bites, but each council meeting moving forward, let's stay on it until we hammer it out.
Can we start on the seventh? And I say that only because we've got a pretty full plate until then.
Perfect. I meant perfect by me, council, is that okay?
Seven.
I just have one more co- comment when, uh, I, I was flipping through there to find that map that was there, which I can't find. But anyway, there's different zoning along that corridor, especially on the outskirts. So could we have form-based, um, direction to the various zoning that's there?
The way, the way I'm looking at this going forward is that everything along Old Forty-One would be given either one of the existing designations and modified or new designation, however you want to do it. And the regulations for that would be based in the newer, new form-based if you adopt that.
So what about outside of that?
Your, your existing regulations would apply, but I assume that we're going to be looking at the whole downtown area in one form or fashion. So while we may start with this, I think that's the most important piece because that's kind of what we're looking at, starting this momentum. Once you start getting out into the townhome area or the single-family area or some of the strictly commercial areas, they're still all very important. But this is, this is our kind of, our focus, uh, of, of the entire redevelopment area. So if we get started here, we can branch out from that one. And I figure that will take place over time.
Because I do think, I mean, this issue about height, I think is different depending on what's outside there.
Very much so.
Greg?
I just had a quick comment, I, I should have said it earlier. When you, when you were talking about the downtown area, I know we've had people in here before to talk about it. And, uh, Mr. Weeks, I seen him back there and it kind of jogged my memory. Everything you've said so far is stopped at Terry Street. Do we want to continue further north to the Rosemary area? Because historically, we, do we want a proverbial line in the sand?
I don't think you want a line in the sand, but this kind of goes right into what I was just saying. That's, that, right now, that's strictly commercial. And while I think that that area is just as important as other commercial areas and other portions of the redevelopment area, because it's strictly commercial, it's not going to be as difficult to get to the final product. When you're starting to mix uses, when you're starting to bring in a different way to evaluate projects, it's a big change. There's a lot of information that you, we have got to prepare and then you have to evaluate. That being strictly commercial is going to be a little bit easier to address.
Well, and I just know like above Benita Baker used to be, there were some living quarters there. And so I, I just don't want to have to reinvent the wheel again because we stopped at Terry Street.
And I'll be honest with you, I say Terry Street, but I think that the properties that surround that traffic circle should all be included.
And, and that's what I mean. So now you're going to stop at the old Nelson's Plaza, then Buffalo Chips in that area or the, uh, what is it? The Allen Building on the, on the west side or the east side? It's going to say, why not us, or we're going to try and change that and go, just going to keep going further.
It's all important, but I've only got twenty-four hours in a day.
I understand that, no.
I, I, I don't want anybody to think that they're not as important or it's not a big deal.
No, I just, when we look at that whole area, because you know, on the north side of Rosemary is a nice vacant lot also.
Oh, there's a lot of nice areas up there.
So that's what I'm saying, I don't want to have something totally different there than what we're proposing for downtown.
No, but I, I, I think that, another reason why I like focusing on Old Forty-One first is everything needs to flow with that and from that. And I think that when you set the tone with that, both in terms of momentum and in terms of uses and design standards, everything is going to be, is going to play from that. It needs to work with what you set up. If it's, if it's a great idea, but it has no relation to what we do there, I think you lose momentum because then you do have that line in the sand.
Well, that's what I'm worried about. If someone picks, would choose the, the Old Forty-One and Rosemary, that nice lot there, and they put something there that doesn't flow with what we're trying to do down there, what are we going to do? Right now, we have no way of telling them, nah, that doesn't work.
In a rezoning, you do, um, within reason. But yes, it's a very valid concern. It's.
If it doesn't work, I'll tell you about it later.
In term, in terms of timing, uh, this is something we started, we asked for in the middle of the summer, obviously the hurricane hit. I, I think this stuff is pretty straightforward. I'd like to move it forward fast, um, as fast as we can, I really would. So that way, uh, we get a lot better chance of igniting good development downtown. I think part of what's holding development downtown is we've got an incoate set of stuff. Uh, we, you know, we, we've got stuff that was, uh, adopted in nine, two thousand and seven. They weren't thinking about this huge investment we made there then. I'm, I'm going to say it wasn't thought through, but I don't mean that as a criticism. I'm just saying what was put in place then was fit to serve what was there then, which really wasn't much of, wasn't working. So, um, I really like where you're going, I want to thank staff for their work and I want to suggest that we really move this quickly. And I'm hopeful that this form-based concept that John came up with is, it just makes sense. And, and, you know, it's just something we haven't heard enough about. But we need more clarity for people downtown so we can attract better development downtown. And I want to get that clarity soon.
Can I maybe bring back?
Talking about it.
Can I bring back a priority list on the twenty-first? That way at least you know what's coming up when.
Yeah.
Sounds good.
I think we could do it right now.
Well, I mean, we're going to start on the seventh.
Okay, well, what?
Right. You're talking the twenty-first of February?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Okay, but why don't we kick it off now? Pete, go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, to me, the priority list is height, it's form, including setbacks. And I'm not implying none of this has been thought through. I mean, it, some of this is in the code. It's, uh, basic, it's a basic density number that we stick to as opposed to adding on bells and whistles. But one that, you know, would attract development downtown. You know, in my head, we're somewhere around twenty, twenty-five, which is frankly more than I think is being suggested in some of the stuff we're hearing about here. Then go with an, maybe FAR is the way to go, but it's going to be an interpretation of density.
So that needs to be in the same discussion.
Same discussion. And I think then, I agree with you on, on the other part, which is we're saying commercial on the first floor. And then we're, we're not getting into every possible use known to man.
And I'll just get, I'll call that development standards essentially.
And then parking. And I think you've laid out a good template here today. The only thing I'm a little up in the air on is the aesthetics and what we're doing on that.
I will run that, I'll try to run that parallel but separate. I'll have Sam Vincent working on that portion of it and I'll work with him to set the two feet off each other.
I, I agree with, uh, Mike on that. In other words, we don't want to be, I mean, sterile, God bless them, but everything is Mediterranean. Uh, they like it. Uh, it's, it's nice to see things a little different, but you don't want massive clashes either, in my view.
But that's my thought. Council, we've got four minutes, although obviously we can do whatever we want until city council. But do you want to kind of go around the horn, Mike, for last thoughts or last call for marching orders here?
No, we can talk about it when it comes back.
Okay, great, thanks, Mike. Fred?
No, no, I was just going to propose you might want to take a stretch break.
Well, okay, get a bite to eat. Uh, Amy?
I'm for a stretch break.
Okay.
Same here.
We're good? We're good, okay, you got that? Bless you, Audrey. Okay, why don't we, uh, you got your, everything good there, John?
Yes, sir.
Great job, okay, fantastic. Why don't we, it's five twenty-seven, why don't we reconvene at?
Other public comment?
Oh, yeah, we had public comment earlier, I apologize. Rick, come on up for public comment or anybody else.
Okay, yeah, well, thank you, Mayor. I'm, my family was in the restaurant business long before I was born. And if you drive by Coconut Jacks or, or Buffalo Chips up here, you see a massive number of cars. You need a massive amount of parking to have a successful restaurant. A massive amount of, you could take up the whole bamboo court with one restaurant if that was it. I think, uh, I mean, there's formulas somewhere that will tell you how many parking spots you need for a restaurant. I know they have number, formulas that tell you, tell you how many parking spots you need for a church pew. Everything's been analyzed forever. Restaurants are the riskiest business in the world. It's so seasonal. Now, I live in a condominium, has twenty-three units, we have one, one and a half parking spots per unit. That's not, never enough because some of the people have two cars, okay? And then you have people come to service, the plumbers, you've got service people come, you've got people to remodel. It's not enough parking, one point two is not enough for any business to, to survive. If you're going to have a commercial business downstairs, they're going to have to have more than two parking spots to do business. We, 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 we can't build every inch covered with concrete and people and expect it to be a viable situation. Uh, we've been working on this for eighteen years, I hope we can get it done someday in my lifetime. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Other members of the public? Yes, please come forward, sir. Hello, welcome.
Hi, Council. I'm Chip Greenwood from Buffalo Chips Restaurant. Just, I am here on a, a good note. I'm here with the, uh, post-event report on the Wing Fest two thousand and eighteen in, in the park. So just wanted to thank the, uh, city of Benita Springs for letting us put it on. And, uh, thank Laura Taylor and Patrick Lippie for helping me with the paperwork and the permitting process. Uh, just wanted to tell you, it was a great event, attracted a lot of, a lot of people more than I expected. Uh, God gave us a beautiful day. We had the Florida State Chicken Wing Eating Contest and, uh, went over good. We raised, uh, two thousand four hundred twenty-four dollars for Lions Club, Buffalo Chips did. And Travis Harper was our champion. He ate thirty wings in six minutes. And, uh, yeah, total of one pound, fourteen ounces.
Drumsticks, thighs, what were they?
Mixed in, yeah.
Okay.
Just medium sauce, yeah. So, uh, yeah, it was a great day, a lot, a lot of fun. And, uh, Mike Gibson was there, present to represent the city. No, he didn't compete, thank God.
Oh, my.
But he represented the city and he was there, uh, to present the trophy to the winner. Uh, so I want to thank you, Mike, for being there and, uh, just thank everybody. And we actually had a Buffalo Chip, um, throwing event, you know, to win prizes. And so I brought one for you. And I got, it's a souvenir I got from Mike, so there you go.
Nice catch.
It's all yours.
All right.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much.
And if you need help with the new restaurant the city's acquiring, I'm available to offer, uh, time, expertise. If you have workshops or anything, honestly, I will volunteer to help you get it going.
Appreciate it, thank you very much.
Thank you, guys, thanks for your service.
Were you happy with the Super Bowl?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm not going to pick on you.
Okay. Other members of the public that would like to speak? Tony? Anthony, how you doing?
Couple of things I just want to say to the discussion we had, which by the way, that went very well tonight, I liked it. There's some things you got to keep in your head. First off, you got to decide not just how many units, but what kind of units you want. First off, if you build three-story buildings, we're going to all build walk-ups, they're not going to have elevators. Because the economy to scale doesn't pay for elevators. If you build four-story buildings, you're going to have elevators, makes a much more charming building. If you want to build for restaurants on the first floor and, uh, units up above, there has to be some sort of a tie-in between. between the two. When I did the Columbia Bicycle Building with Paul Royf in Boston, we were in Back Bay, and, you know, you hit it on the head. You say you've got to bring them something there. And we were facing the hole in the road that becomes the freeway, the mass pipe going out of town. You know what I mean? Well, what we did was we tied all the units up above with the elevators into the lobby of the restaurant. And those units brought massive amounts of money because, simply because they could order food, or they could go downstairs to the bar. It wasn't just selling the restaurant. It was the whole group. That building just broke a record. You guys could check this. The penthouse unit on the top just sold for $15 million. Most expensive unit sold in Boston. We sold it for $450,000 back then. But, you know, that's what we're trying to do here. We've got, where the elevator's landing, is the open space that goes through the building, right? And they have tables outside in that space that even if it rains, they're serving outside. We're built for restaurants. I've been talking to 821. These are, you know, people I know personally, and quite a few others. Joey D's, we just did a $2 million pizzeria for him on Marco Island. He wants to come here. He's looking at space here. The young lady who's sitting over there in the, bring her here. Her husband does root canals, and we're talking to him, and we're talking to Millennium for the building that's over him back, because it doesn't fit where a restaurant is.
They have to go back a couple of blocks, Tony.
Yeah. Keep the pain in the rear. But all I'm saying is, we try to design to everybody. But here's the important thing to remember. When you say about cutting the number of units, okay, land is no longer sold by how many acres you got. It's like that in suburbia, but it isn't. We're priced by how many units you have. Usually, at about 50,000 a unit, or 40,000 a unit. And then, that just depends on how classy a unit you can build there, which, once again, depends on those elevators. Elevators make a good building. There's no doubt about it in my mind. If you look at my plans, I got elevators and everything. In fact, the units I got in the back on the river, where you park underneath the building, I got elevators and those from the garage going upstairs. I'm a firm believer in that. That's what brings the price. All I'm saying is, try not to be so restrictive that we can't build an elegant development. And I want to tell Abby, you mentioned doing nice rivers. I did one of the nicest ones in the country, and I wish you'd take a look at it online. Look up water fires. Okay. And one of the things I wouldn't, I do there, is with all the people around who had businesses and so on, I didn't do one hip-hop club, you know, none of that stuff. But we did have the decks going down to the river designed so that we could put the Rinaldo Philharmonic on there, and bring people up the river with the water fires in their boats to watch the Philharmonic there. You know, you...
Design to what you want, but again, you're going to design what happens.
You're out of time, but...
Oh, okay.
You've been extended.
Okay, thank you.
You're in overtime.
All I'm saying is, keep in mind that you want to go to high quality, because you've got a high quality location. When we were in here last time, one of the council members, I don't remember who, I was absolutely floored. They said, what about amenities? This town is the amenity. This town's gorgeous. You don't need to build a swimming pool. That's not what people are coming here for. You've got that gorgeous little place on the river that people could walk up and down to and go to coffee shops. There's a little coffee shop on the back street. I think the previous mayor originally built it. That place is wonderful. Whoever, whoever goes into bamboo should be made to make a brick sidewalk that goes across the street with the brick pads and right over to them. They should be included in it. This, this, this place has an ambiance all of its own. But don't make the development so restrictive that you have to build cheap units. That's all.
Yep, great. Thank you. Other members of the public that would like to speak? This is on the workshop. This is not a city council meeting. Okay, just checking. All right, why don't we adjourn now? It's 5:36. I know it's short, but we'll start city council at 5:45. Thank you.